All in favor of accepting the minutes from April 23rd, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
So on the 9:00 clock, we're going to move right into...
Yeah.
So any citizens input, any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Total time allotted for citizens' input shall be 15 minutes. Speakers are requested to complete a simple form giving name, address, the subject available at the community development department office prior to 9:00. All right. Okay, I'll open up our 9:05 public hearing on consideration of a mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS-15-07 for parcel map PM-15-01. The project applicant is Wayne Alstom proposing to subdivide an existing approximately four and one-third acre lot owned by Short Game Club LLC into two parcels. The project is located at 1235 Mountain View Drive, Lakeport, and is further described as APN-01500419.
Uh, the proposed parcel sizes would be parcel one is approximately two and a half acres and parcel two would be roughly two acres in size. Parcel one, proposed parcel one is currently developed with single family residence and a detached garage. Proposed parcel two is shown on the tenant's map is currently approved with two houses. Uh, this property parcel is used as a manufacturer home sales site. There are aerial photographs on the site. Currently the property is split zone with the rear portion being SR and the front portion being C2. And the project is found to be consistent with the Lakeport area plan and the Lake County general plan. Uh, here's sort of the parcel map. These site photos, here's the manufacturer home that was the sales office and here's the separate smaller unit. Uh, here's the driveway access up to the back portion of the property. Staff recommends approval of the project. There was a late communication with the applicant concerning the water availability on the parcel. There's an existing well on proposed parcel two, which is the lower portion and they were going to have to share it well with the environmental health finally or approving the well that shows it has enough capacity to service both lots. That will be done prior to filing with the final map. No questions?
I'll open up the public hearing from this. Uh, if you'd like to speak on the matter, please come forward, state your name, sign the book there. Okay, no questions? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back together. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission to find that on the basis of the initial study, she's 15-07 prepared by the planning division. The parcel map is applied by Short Game Club LLC. The mitigation measures which have been added to the plan will not have a significant effect on the environment and therefore mitigated negative declarations. Tell me if you were the findings listed in the staff report.
One second. All in favor of mitigated negative declarations of the project, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission to find that the tenant parcel map applied by Short Game Club LLC. It will be located at 1235 Mountain View Drive. Is in conformity with the provisions of the 700 map act and chapter 17 of the Lake County code. Upon that basis, approve that map subsequently with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 29th.
One second. All in favor of attending parcel map? Say aye.
Aye.
Note the applicant or any interested persons reminded that submission order is provided for a 15 calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and application will be must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the 15th calendar day following the commission's final determination. We have 10 minutes before the next hearing starts. Do we have any office information or anything?
Uh, you've been to the county website, uh, recently, you're just including all the department sites. It's been updated and it's easier to find you, but there's a lot of information. Such a site for you to fill out. So hopefully we can get a lot of people asking questions online. So that's going to be, hopefully, I haven't constructed for a while, but really in life, so you might see some bands heading out with information for a while until we get...
Other than that, we're plugging away on the code enforcement program. I know it doesn't affect you guys directly, but it's been a big, big issue in the department. Uh, we're looking at tapping the some community development department block for funding to provide for a kind of accelerated code enforcement program for income eligible areas of the county, which are kind of scattered all around the county. We're looking at that to do enhanced code enforcement in those areas that doesn't take energy or effort away from the normal focus we're trying to do with the more horses and tourism areas. So, uh, we've been pre-approved to spend the money and it's been sitting in the pot for a while, it's about $160,000. We'll be able to use about half of that for the accelerated program. It will allow us to bring in a couple of community development technicians on a limited term basis, about 18 to 20 months, and help keep, keep those particular cases in those targeted areas moving a lot quicker. About 80, 85% of the work on the case is paperwork versus field work. So having technicians coordinating all that paperwork, it creates a, it's a really good positive impact.
All right, let's have a, we'll take a five minute break before the next hearing starts tonight. 2020, sorry, 2020. Item number two, public hearing on consideration of mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS-15-01 for minor modification to use permit MMU-1502 and 03. The project applicant is Geyser's Power Company LLC proposing to construct an above ground pipeline corridor approximately 2,626 feet in length and will connect Westport Flat Streamfield to an existing pipeline that serves Calistoga's utility. The project is located at 10350 Socrates Mine Road, built out and further described as APNs-01300415 and 01300507.
So those pipelines can run from the flat just above Westport Flat and follow the G-trail along right here. It's going to continue up to here and then it's going to open up into this area. The only portion that will need to be graded is approximately 500 feet when it crosses over right, approximately in this area will be the only area graded, it's approximately .4 acres. And the pipeline will just mainly allow like during routine maintenance or standby when other plants aren't standby, allow the direct esteem to other plants and reduce emissions during routine maintenance. Yeah, the grading system remove base grass and grubs.
So it's not, it's not deep, it's not very, it's just scraping.
Scraping. And then over the seasonal, post-seasonal drainage area, they're going to put in temp bridges to minimize the impact on those.
Right, there'll be, the real excavation will be for the footings that are spaced and I think that the applicant will be able to describe that in more detail what that interval of the footing spacing is, looking at about seven pipeline.
So everything's above ground?
Yes, everything will be above ground. So, so does this, the Westport Flat, the pipeline will be connected directly to right here? And then it'll go up the... So then, once it's connected there, it'll follow up the G-trail, along the G-trail and go up that way. Then when it hears off into the open area, that's the Calistoga plant there and it'll shoot approximately 504 feet across that area to the connecting road there and it'll follow the, the road to the Calistoga plant to reconnect into one of the other pipelines that I showed you in the Westport Flat. And it's approximately 30 inches in diameter. The other photos that are just showing the drainage ditches.
Okay, advocates have a PowerPoint, they'll probably be able to kind of walk you through this a little better. Mr. Chairman, if we can invite an applicant, represent someone. Please both state your name and sign it in the paper.
My name is Bruce Carlson, I'm with Calisoga. And, uh, I present to you our project here, the steam cross that pipeline. This is part of a greater project that, uh, has been ongoing for decades in the Geyser's, where we optimize the output of the Geyser's through various projects. Some of those have been injection of water from Lake County, um, County and things like that, and serving water throughout the Geyser's. We've also replaced the turbine rotors to match the current steam pressure, steam pressure when these facilities were built. We have 100 pounds and now we're down on 100, so see that.
Sir, could you hold the mic because I don't think it's going to...
Is that better, go? Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Um, so, the other thing that's happened in the Geyser's is the starting, you know, each and each day is shut down, plus efficient facilities. There's actually, you know, the Geyser's was essentially overbuilt and, and, uh, we downed 2,000 megawatts an hour for around 800 megawatts of heat required. Uh, so several facilities that have been shut down. We recently put Bear Canyon Power Plant on sand. The other thing we've been doing is cross time fields. We envisioned all these power plants used to have dedicated steam fields and so they were islands amongst themselves. And, and, uh, and that was because there was contracts with steam suppliers to provide steam to that plant. And, um, so, uh, once that went away, where we became the steam supplier and the electrical producer, auctions opened and, and what happened when a plant was shut down, they would vent steam from the wells to keep them hot and then that produced emissions. And also that steam wasn't being utilized. So, we put in a series of cross tie pipelines, so when a plant went offline for maintenance or trip due to some unknown thing, the steam just would shift up to the next plant and it's more efficient. So this is, again, a good maximizing of the resource output and minimizing emissions as well. Next slide. So it's easy to talk about facilities with housing across that pipeline, there's a lot of them. And, and what remains of a land way out of Sonoma County, uh, Westport Flat, which is what we're talking about here today, Calistoga and Socrates. So those cross ties, those, and again, this maximizes, you know, our output, which is tax revenues, continued employment, support services. We have about a half, we have 300 employees, about half again as many contractors on the hill at any given time, uh, supporting operations of the, and our landowners like us maximizing the royalty, so that, we're also trying to maximize the California's, you know, little car power. Next slide. This is an overview, um, kind of just to give you a lay of land. You can see the Westport plant.
Sorry.
That's all right. Uh, the Westport Flat Plant and the Calistoga Plant. The plants themselves are physically pretty far apart, but their steam fields actually are not. So here's Westport Flat and here's Calistoga. So let's go to the next slide, I think it'll become more clear. So here's a view from the east, you can see the Westport Flat Plant and it's got a well pad right here. You have the Calistoga Plant and it has steam field well pad over here. And so, you really only need to cross tie right here so that when this, when Calistoga goes down, some of this steam will shift to Westport or Westport goes offline for whatever reason, it will shift to Calistoga. And so this is, this is the project that we're here to talk about today. So when we look at, you know, whether or not to do a cross type decision, there's a lot of things that would come into it. And again, with, you know, uh, this project will minimize the times that wells aren't being posed to the facility. The Westport Flat was all by itself and, and there were times when emissions would go out from there and from the wells and from the keepers. In this case, the steam we just shoved off to the Calistoga. Calistoga is already cross tied with Sonoma and, uh, if it's already, it's already a cross type situation. And so we model various things, whether it's online, it's offline, operating using, you know, uh, Westport Flat actually has two small turbines, you know, so one turbine needs to be worked on, you know, what will be the consequence of all these consequences showing steam period after period of time. Both the plants will be shut down as well. So it looks at all, all aspects. And, and again, the steam is expected from, if we shut down Westport Flat for operation, whatever, most of the steam is going to be utilized with Calistoga. So as staff has said, the pipeline is a 38 centimeter sized steel, steel pipe, um, it's about half a mile long between the steam gathering systems. The support infrastructure would also be in there like on the same collection system, electrical and communication, those are very small, not being on the same, same, uh, track there. And construction, we think will take three to four months, that's why we're kind of anxious to get started. Other nature is punishing us with a lot of driveway, but it's, 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 it's construction. It'll cost about two to three billion dollars, you know, which we're hanging for July after a great, that was great, and a contract that was in order. So on the environmental side, on land, um, we, we basically have two use permits that come right up against each other. Of course, when those use permits were originally conceived, they weren't thinking they were two different companies, so they weren't talking about cross tie. So, so those two use permits are involved, uh, also the money modification and then, uh, so we submitted application in January, uh, Lake County Senate of State agencies and comments. And then, in May, uh, we were looking close to, to having a hearing, so we sent out, um, 3,405 postcards to community, uh, surrounding area and we just have, you know, come in this evening, we'll tell you about this project. A lot of these slides are actually from there. And, uh, and, uh, so that was held at community business at our business center and then on the 26th, we had, uh, site visits with the staff and, um, of course here we're with it. And, so, air vision, as I said before, there's an upside to this. If Westport Flat is down, then there's no need to lead wells, the steam would be shoved off to Calistoga and, um, so that would be, you know, a net benefit. And the air crew as far as the pipeline actually has, it's, 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 it's that works well visually, you know, it's located along the G-trail, a lot of portions of this are covered from view and these like, uh, main ones around. Uh, why are we, we engaged early with the Army Corps of Engineers because you, as you saw, even those don't look very significant, those little swales that Mark showed there, they, they, they do follow the, uh, waters, the US, and so we got with Army Corps and, and they advised us that as long as we straddled those, we can, uh, not go into those and stay those 100% that we would need a, or, so we've got these, uh, these are called quick bridges that you can actually, you know, straddle those and, uh, reach, so not, not getting any at all. Noise. This pipeline is similar to the Bear Canyon cross type pipeline that we did last year. Uh, the velocity will be, um, about the same plus and, and you have noise, it's related to velocity. If you have real high velocity, you can, you can create noise. For us, noise from steam pipelines is a loss of energy. You hear something, you're losing energy, so it's not in our best interest to have noisy systems here. So the, the, the pipeline would be pretty much like all the other pipelines, you can stand it exit and they're very quiet. So, cultural resources, um, just a little background, what Calisoga does is very early on in the, in the, the project is even, we call it the imaginary stage, before we even set aside, you know, so we think we'll go through this area, we, we get archaeologists out there right away and, um, as well as biologists. And, and the purpose of that is, uh, we, you know, we have a policy of avoiding anything that might be encountered. So the project could be changed in the early stages by doing your archaeology for way to dance. And, and we've done that. Actually, we don't have a huge history of finding a lot, but when we do, we've avoided it. And I can, you know, think of half a dozen cases where we, we roused a project prior before we did any engineering or anything because, um, our policies, we avoid archaeological sites or historical sites. So anyway, we probably submitted with our application and this, uh, that process also includes contact with the American contract. And one historic resource was identified adjacent to the project area, we're not going through it all, it looks like the possible, uh, mining camp, so we'll be roping it up so there's no access to it. And then the archaeologist didn't recommend any further monitoring. But he's also on, he's contracted and available in making his discovery of the project, things were shut down. Next slide. Water, some, just to kind of, uh, we've done biological studies that have kind of conducted in this area for many, many years and there, and we have mitigation measures, there's specific studies done on the project area, specific mitigation measures that are incorporated in the project. And, um, we'll do wildlife surveys prior to construction. And just a little bit on water, we've been doing aquatic monitoring in that whole area, Anderson and Gunning, Bear Canyon and Nut Creek through permits we have in the county and those are some of the sample sites. You can see up there in the upper left hand corner where it says project area, that's, that's where the pipeline is. So we've got downstream in Anderson, spring, we got a sample site in Bear Canyon. So I just wanted to point out that that's, we, we've been looking at this stuff for 27 years in our operations, known here to be in that, uh, waters. Next slide. And this is, I think, similar to what Mark showed around the pipeline. It starts at one well pad and gets up, intersecting into the, the pipeline between the two of them. And, next slide. I think that's, uh, this is something else that we went over in, over in the book here. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you very much.
My name is Catherine Philopakis. I'm an attorney with Frele Bron and Martel, where the, we provide legal advice to Calpine on their various projects. And you'll see that you got a letter from me yesterday. So when we got the staff report, we were a little concerned about the one condition of approval that said that the applicant should have a cultural resources agreement with the Middletown Rancheria in place prior to construction, which we don't think is quite right, given this particular project. I understand that that condition of approval has been used in other situations, and there may well be Calpine projects where we should be talking about it. But I think for this particular project, the archaeological report has said that there are not any, there's no areas of concern. And the language in the initial study, which is kind of standard language, says if during construction anything is encountered, you stop, you get a qualified archaeologist in and have them investigate or monitor before you continue with construction. And so, the letter that I sent, she simply asked that the condition of approval, have the language modified to say that rather than entering into a cultural resources agreement now, that we have the same, the language that would be more normal, which would say in the event that unidentified cultural resources are encountered during project implementation, all work in the vicinity of the discovery shall stop immediately. The project shall avoid altering the material and a qualified archaeologist should be contacted to evaluate the situation. So that was the language that staff put in the initial study, and we would be comfortable with that as a condition of approval, and we would ask if you would please consider making that change to the conditions of approval for the project. So, I, I can answer any other questions if you have any for me?
A lot of you have questions.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Catherine Philopakis.
Thank you. You mentioned in the past you have worked with the tribes with an agreement or contract. What would this project do?
We have not, I believe, worked out an agreement. There have been discussions about a form of cultural resources agreement that could be used with the tribe, and I believe that those discussions are ongoing. But it's not the case that we haven't established protocol and we're deviating from it here. It would be something new.
So in the past, you've never worked with the tribes?
We have worked, I mean, we have in the sense that they have been invited to participate in discussion and to visit the site and to comment, et cetera. But we have never had, as far as I understand it, we have never had the tribe act as the archaeological resources consultant on a project. I understand that there are now members of the community who are in the process of becoming qualified to do that work, which I think, we think is great and we're supportive of. But for this project, we did what we've always done in the past, which is we contracted with an archaeological component that is not part of the tribe.
So if the tribes were to visit or would they interact with the archaeologists or do they have any say in the matter?
I think that they would be welcome to visit the site at any time they were invited. And if there's some question that they're interested in being present onsite during construction, and maybe I should just give you a little background about what the construction is that we're talking about, I know there was some mention about it. So the, the pipeline rests on stanchions and then there are supports that go into the ground underneath those. And there are about 12 inches of disturbed area for each pipe support, it's a leg, and those occur every 25 feet for the length of the pipeline. Those, so that's what the pipeline rests on. So what we're talking about is little sort of 12-inch holes in the ground, so that's the area that's going to be disturbed. And then the brush clearing along the track that is not already a jeep trail. So it's very minimal grading. So the, I think the question is if someone wanted to be present to observe the digging of those holes, I, I don't think that we would have objection to that. We simply don't want to be required to hire someone on terms that have not yet been negotiated. And with a condition that says we can't move forward with our project unless we have an agreement signed with them. That kind of holds us hostage to an agreement that isn't yet in place.
That's all.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
I'll open up the, of a hearing on this matter, if you'd like to come forward and speak on the matter, if you sign your name and state your name directly.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, good morning. My name is Pamela Reyes Guterres. I'm here on behalf of the Middletown Rancheria, Bomo Indians of California. We are located on the southern end of Lake Calip. And I'd like to acknowledge and thank the opportunity to the board and the commission that we have the capability to speak here on behalf of Calpine and the mitigation that's going forward. Historically, we have supported the opportunity to work with the county on a government-to-government relationship in the manner to address issues and the needs of our tribal people as well as the surrounding community. Recently, we have formalized our tribal historic preservation department to address the cultural historic preservation both on the rancheria and within our ancestral lands. Our TIPo was formulated in November of 2013, in which we are receiving federal funding. Our TIPo department takes the responsibilities of SHIPO and therefore is created and established to preserve our ancestral lands and our surrounding area, not only on the rancheria, which is 108 acres large, which was federally recognized in 1906, but in the surrounding areas where the boundaries are encompassed by our dialect, which is Lake Meowak. And we have recordings of that nature, which gives us the boundaries of where our people had lived and roamed, camped, and so forth. We have engaged in consultation with agencies in the federal government, Army Corps of Engineers, Bureau of Land Management, Department of Forestry, and Caltrans, 1, 3, and 4. We have also engaged with state agencies such as State Historic Preservation Office, Office of Historic Preservation, State Parks, CAL FIRE, California Historic Resources Information Systems, and the Native American Heritage Commission. On a local level, we have begun an informal process with the county, working with the planning department to address projects that are located in culturally sensitive areas. In this effort, we of course do not want to pose and interrupt or stop any projects, rather we choose to mitigate the concerns that we have. And the process we are working to develop has aided us in preservation of culturally sensitive areas and resources. We have already begun working in this capacity on an informal level, because we want to be able to work with the county, we want to be able to work with projects that are moving forward with the agencies in a good manner. The tribe has already reached out to Calpine, to the county, and we have informed them of what we are looking to do as a tribe and our goal with TIPo. To comment on the West Fork Flat project, we did receive notice and requested a condition to permit. We requested that the applicant engage in an agreement with the tribe to address concerns with cultural resources, artifacts, remains, and tribal monitoring primarily affiliated with the ground disturbance activities. Through emails between our TIPo department and Alta Archaeological Consulting in July of 2014, we had requested a cultural survey and a site visit. We received the cultural survey on May 2015, almost a year later. Yesterday evening, we received a copy of the letter submitted by Calpine and their legal counsel and their opposition and their conditions. The tribe has been in business, working with Twin Pie Casino for 20 years. And our perception of receiving a legal counsel document a day prior to a hearing to us is not good business. We don't have sufficient time to review this documentation or even respond. And some of the information provided in that letter is not correct. And yet, we don't have the opportunity to address that, and we'd like to have the opportunity to do that and work together on this project. In considering that we received it, we are requesting that the hearing is convened to allow our attorney to review and provide a letter in response to this opposition. So I'd like to thank you for the opportunity that we have to speak, and I am going to turn this over to our representative on the council, Carlos Negrete.
As I said, my name is Carlos Negrete, I'm the tribal council representative for Middletown Rancheria. I too just wanted to thank the planning commission and everyone here for allowing us in this period to comment. And to reiterate, this has been the only, only time we're going to be here requesting something like this. We'd like to see this happen with more projects in the future, and we are currently talking to other groups and companies about cultural resources agreements. And to reiterate that it would be an agreement, you know, for both sides, or agrees with every committee, that we want to happen there. And we wouldn't hold anyone hostage to any, any part of the agreement, it is an agreement between two groups. Again, I thank you guys for allowing us to speak today, and we hope to have some time to be able to respond to, to a letter that we received yesterday.
Are there any questions that you may have for us?
I have a question. I have one. So with, along the lines of the agreement, because we don't really know what that would be, do you have a feeling, experience in the past, but typically with the, what you were looking to be looking for?
We're, what we're looking for is to have a monitor, a monitor whenever there is ground disturbance going on. Now, the, we're not looking to have an, we work along with the archaeologists that they have on staff, but our monitors that we have on the tribal are, their specialty is to know what the cultural sensitivity is, what materials we use for gathering and what we see, or what shavings have come across. They are the expertise in what they know is culturally out there. And so what we're looking to is work along with the archaeologists that the agency or the consultant would have there, and just be allowed to be there while only ground disturbance is going on.
Sounds like you would anticipate that, that being the area where they'd leave the roads to cross over, to cross the two drainages, that's just that one area, and that would be for the footings then, or for?
Correct.
Just for the footings?
Just for the footings, only during the ground disturbance. For example, we're working on a project right now with Caltrans on the Highway 29, and when ground disturbance is going on there, they have an archaeologist on behalf of Caltrans, and in conjunction with our tribal monitors, they are there and they just observe. The work is still progressing and moving forward, but if they were to find any type of remains or so forth, then at that time, the project would stop. Ultimately, we're not looking to stop any type of work, we're just looking to preserve any type of tribal artifacts that may come about.
Sure. And there would be, so a project of this size would require one monitor for that part of the project, that's what I was.
They'd normally work with one archaeologist and one monitor.
Thank you.
I'm Joan Clay, Anderson Springs, and Anderson Springs does support this project. Calpine's been very good about keeping us informed in all the things you saw from meeting notes. And although I was not aware of, who spoke before me, and I would just say that I do think the commission should take that very seriously on that permit, and Anderson Springs would be backing that. But I also just wanted to say is when things happen on Calpine and we have a good relationship there, that I would want the planning commission, particularly District 1, to remember Anderson Springs is easily affected, and when you're up there, it's not that you're so aware of us. So all I'm asking on today and any other project that you remember that, and Anderson Springs is always more than willing to talk to any, any one of the commissioners, particularly District 1. If you have any questions for me. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jim Knox. I'm sort of, I'm not really fully aware of this, I just walked in a few minutes ago. But my question, my question would be to Calpine, having done a little construction on my own property, is if this is a jeep trail and we're talking about construction equipment going in there, are we talking about any kind of improvement to the jeep trail? Are we talking about widening it? Are we talking about straightening it? Are we, in terms of equipment that goes in there, heavy equipment, will there be any other ground disturbance to the, to this half, nearly half-mile site? Those are questions that I would like to have answered. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim was?
Yes.
For Jim's questions there, yeah, the equipment, there'll be equipment moved in to, to the, to growing up in that, that equipment, the Eli's, that jeep trail, which is existing. So it will get kind of probably groomed, but we're not widening it, we're not doing anything, and then it just, so the trucks that come and drill the holes can pass easily, so there's no, no huge improvement of it. Probably grooming it from the grain stores, things like that. So not, not, not a great job. Just for data access.
And the equipment, is this large equipment or is it just back over in that, you know, tractor type?
It's more, more tractor type equipment. I think they use an auger machine, is what I've seen them use typically. And it's not a very steep, so we, we use a lot, less aggressive.
Mr. Chair, may I just clarify the, so what we're talking about for the
Mr. Chair, may I just clarify the, so what we're talking about for the, the footings for the support legs for the pipeline, in an interval of 25 feet, we're looking at roughly 100 of those, just give or take, about 100 of those. And they would be essentially drilled, if I'm understanding correctly? They're using a, something similar to what utility pools are, just not as deep, obviously. Do you know the depth of the footings, Chance?
I don't, as you do, for 155. Then we can look at the chance of 10 feet.
Patrick Phillips, again, for Calpine. I think we appreciate very much that the tribe has come today and made their position clear. And Calpine values very sincerely its relationship that it has had with the ranch area on an ongoing basis. And I think they look forward to continue to live relations. So there was no intent on our part to be bad neighbors. But I think, just so that it's clear for the commission, Calpine has no objection if the tribe wants to send a monitor at their cost to observe our construction. We are, we welcome anyone who is concerned in the governmental agency to be present on the site during construction. The, really what's at issue is that the proposed agreement that we've seen would require Calpine to reimburse that monitor at a rate of between $75 to $150 an hour during the construction process based on who the monitor was. And so we, we feel that it's unusual for a county government to require an applicant to hire another agency and name that agency as a condition of approval of a project because we, our, our project would be held up if we were not able to agree to the terms. So that is really what this comes down to essentially for this project. And I think it's probably something that will be a subject of ongoing discussions.
My name is Stephanie Reyes, and I'm the tribal historic preservation officer for the Middletown Ranch area. And just to clarify a few issues. One, as we've started this project and we started moving forward with the developer of the preservation, we found that historically that there hasn't been any considerations given to any of the development that's moved forward. Oftentimes artifacts that are found underneath the ground that come out, or even on the surface, go into private collection. Oftentimes that happens with archaeologists or even private matters. What we're now doing is working in a collaborative manner to educate the archaeologists on what is important to the tribe and culturally sensitive, so that we can preserve that for our people as well as for historical information. When we talk about monitoring, we have our people who are trained by knowing our culture and having a firm understanding of who we are and how to properly care for these items as they come out of the ground. Our monitors are full-time employees elsewhere. They're raised in our culture and they understand what they're looking for. When I ask them to come and work on a site, I ask them to take time off of their jobs. That's why we compensate them. At the rate that $75 an hour is obviously, in some instances, considered high. For other professionals, it's not. It's a low wage. Just to break it down for you, our program that we currently have, we receive minimal funding from the government. And one of the ways they have, in order for us to generate revenue, is to provide monitoring. When we do that, a portion of that fee itself goes directly to support the department. A small portion, I would say, I think a third of that portion pays the actual monitor. So it's not something that's going straight to one person standing there on site. The other thing that I wanted to mention is this is going to be a practice that's going to be pushed further when there are changes in Tsequah coming through AB 52. Come July 1st, we're all looking at the different regulations on how this will be inputted into a formal working relationship with local agencies. Right now, we formally work with federal agencies on this level, and we do have monitoring agreements with these dollar amounts, with these provisions that they turn over the items that they found to the tribe for their possessions. We currently do this now with the agencies at the current rates. We have not had an issue. It's been moving forward and working well with us. And it's just, obviously, we understand it's a change. It's something that people are not used to dealing with in this community. It's something applicants are not used to dealing with, as they've said, historically they haven't had to do it. But now with the way things are moving forward, it's a change that will be coming. And we'd like to be proactive in that change. We're not here to stop the projects. We're here to preserve what we have left of our history that can be found. Up there, we know there are sites. We know that in 1979, there was a, a point of, an actual site that was placed on the federal register or the national register. Are those taken into consideration? We don't know yet. We haven't had ample time to review it. When we thought the condition was going to go through, we didn't pull up all that information. We started to look into it last night because of comments from our tribal elders that remember those things happening up there in the 70s. When we go back through the documents, we talked to them, and that's just in brief discussions yesterday. They're paranoid. They instructed us to really look into it because they remember there was something that happened up there that prevented some movement. So when the, like I said, we started to look into it. It wasn't a long time. We were there until 2:00 this morning, trying to review documents and talk to our people because of the late notice. If we had more time to move forward with this, we wouldn't stop if we're moving. We just have time to have that dialogue. Do you have any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
I do have a question. What options do you have if a project manager decides not to work with you? Are there options?
Well, currently under CEQA, what we could do in this, like an instance like this, we would provide a fair argument that based on our expert testimony or what they're professionals, that we feel additional study should occur. If they don't want us to be on site, then secure us by letting us know that you've done, go further with your studies towards a DIR and say, you know, we've done extensive studies now, and we're proving it to you that there's nothing in this area. And then we would be content with that. But we need to have security. That was a point that our people crossed over when they traveled. They can sit there and mark on, what was it, 711 and Sonoma 693? Both points were Lake Milwauk areas where there was a hunting campsite. Even the reason why one of them was put onto the national register was because of the limited soil that was in that area. It's not like when people are, you know where you live, right? Your home is here, but you're in the community. So if you were to say that there were Indians right here, it doesn't mean they stayed in that spot. They could have easily moved in that area. So it's hard to say when we look at the square that there is nothing on the ground. But once we go into the ground, we may find something. And if we do, it's obviously in a proactive manner to have the tribe there saying, we were a part of it, we saw this, we did whatever formalities and cultural protocols that we had to do to bring these items out, they were either reinterred, or we dealt with it in a manner that's protective of the sacredness of that area and those items. But without that there, that's how we're losing the rest of our history. So I know it's a different change. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question to Calpine. How long would it take to dig, if there's 100 digits of 100 in these footings? And we're really only talking about footings as they cross the area that's undisturbed at this point. How long will it take to dig those, after those footings cross up on there for 500 days? A day?
I can, I can take a fair guess at that. I think it's a three-month project is probably the first year of the project.
But would just the ones, the one area?
Well, the footings are all along the area.
Yeah, I understand that. But I see, when I asked the question at the time, I thought, I understood they were really concerned about the area after it leaves the jeep trail.
Yeah, the 500.
There'd only be just that 500 feet.
I've heard both. I actually heard initially it was the 500 feet, and I heard today, footings. It's, it's each of them. Especially if they're talking about going to have a, someone.
So it's something where it takes 10 feet. Well, I, you know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just think, so, so the monitor would have to be there for all the diggings, all the sites are reported, they can make, they can make an agreement based on the fact that at the time we just, we're interested to be able, we only concerned about the one area. If you just limit it to one area, if that's agreeable to everybody, that is just the 500 feet of the undisturbed area where the cultural monitor would be there? Or is, or is that not possible? Is that 500 feet?
I think, Mr. Chair, your commission may want to ask your council, there's also a legal issue here and thresholds in CEQA, whether, whether the county has the legal authority to require an agreement. Based on the amount of, level of review that's already been done on this site, Calpine's archaeologists, so I think this is a very difficult and concerning issue for all of us, but there are legal issues as well.
Please. I'll take it. There's no federal or state law that requires this provision be in the agreement. Usually these are done as an agreement between the parties, and it's called an agreement they're supposed to agree. There was a reference to AB 52, which goes into effect July 1st, which gives increased consultation rights to tribes under CEQA. It also doesn't require that these type of provisions be, be put in a permit as a requirement for the project. So, so I just wanted to be clear that while there may be some interest in, in having some of these agreements, they're not federally or state required.
Okay, so we can't, so it's in our conditions, but technically we can't require it. But we can encourage it?
Yeah, I, I think that's fair to say. I, you know, staff and I have been encouraging it in certain situations where either an archaeological review wasn't done because the initial record search from Sonoma State determined there was, there was no resources in the vicinity, or the archaeological report that was done maybe wasn't all that adequate. It was just, you know, walking through a field of grass. And it's an area that the tribe's telling us, hey, this is really sensitive. We have settlements in that vicinity that are unreported. Then in those cases, staff has encouraged the applicants to work with the tribe for the agreement. We're not getting into the details of that agreement, and I certainly understand both sides, both parties' concerns with that. I don't think we have the legal authority to require it under CEQA. We've been trying to, to utilize this cultural resources monitoring agreement as an alternative to doing a study in an area where it's questionable whether, whether there are, you know, there's resources in the area. You know, we know there's certain areas in the county that are much more sensitive than others. It's easier if it's a government project, because the, the government can agree, you know, local government can agree to, to monitoring agreements for certain projects, such as the South Main Street water project, will probably have an agreement on that because that's a very culturally significant area with lots of reported resources.
I think I wanted to add too that I believe these provisions have been in the permits in the past because they had been agreed to by the applicant beforehand. They, they come to the, they had either signed or agreed to sign some sort of agreement. And so therefore, it was put in the permit because there had already been the agreement. That's a, that's a different perspective than being required if the applicant is not willing to have the provision.
One other option might be to, I'm trying to think of some middle ground here. And one option that could, you know, might be worth having discussion about is having a accidental discovery agreement, if you will. So for instance, you know, Calpine's archaeologist is saying, we really don't think we're going to find anything in this area, studied the area, done a record search, et cetera, et cetera. But there's always the possibility that something is on earth during, during the project. And when that, again, when that happens, by state, federal law, one is required to immediately halt work in the vicinity and contact their archaeologists. Might be able to have some sort of a limited agreement where there's a, a clear written understanding of, if something's discovered, not only does the, the permit holder's archaeologist get called to the site, at that point, the tribe has notified, they're, they're, you know, they're given a heads up, their monitor can come to the site and work alongside with the archaeologist. And then in that agreement, they can also work out the details of it, where, who receives those materials? Do they have to be reinterred? Can they be given to the tribe? And you have an agreement for that sole, you know, for that limited purpose of addressing the issue if it arises. That, that may be something that is a fair compromise that applicants can agree to that, you know, kind of keeps us out of that CEQA, you know, we don't think we have the legal authority to force the applicant to enter into the monitoring agreement during all the construction.
So I'm, I am confused. I mean, so the auger goes down in the ground, it goes down for 10 feet, it goes around, it comes out, and bones pop out. I mean, how are these things even discovered? How are these things discovered? I mean, the auger goes in the ground, it goes around, it comes out, and something of value to the tribe is, is revealed? And there's an archaeologist there that's waiting for that to happen?
Well, I, if.
The way this normally works is Calpine does everything that we have done to pay, which is basically hire an archaeologist, who does the record search, does the field review, looks at the site, and, and the records, makes contacts with the tribes in the area. And through that, he makes recommendations whether or not, and he looks at surrounding sensitive sites as well. And then he'll make his recommendation whether he thinks this has got any, any potential. And in this case, it doesn't seem like, you know, his recommendation was no monitoring. Now, we have had cases, really, only one time in my recent memory, where, where the archaeologist said, no, this is an area of sensitivity because we see this and this surrounding it, we will be on site while you do those auger holes in that area.
Was that this archaeologist?
It might have been.
There was a different one?
Yeah. We used like two or three of those.
That was Sonoma State.
So we used Sonoma State, we used Alta, we used both of them. So in that case, then he made the recommendation to have a monitor on site. And so as we did the work in Auger, then that site was not touched until there was a monitor there. And they sent, I'm sorry, archaeologists up there to watch as they went to that area. Nothing was found, but it was based on, you know, evidence on the ground or, or something in the area that led them to believe this had potential. In this case, they, they don't see that potential. And so the recommendation is not to have a monitor on site. Like I said, it's not a time we've had that recommendation, just that one, a decade and a half that I did with Calpine. So, so that's been the process so far. And, and I guess I want to add too that I think we're, we're in a, in change right now. July 1, things are changing, and we're trying to understand what those rules are. I think we've been good stewards. I, I no doubt, I don't doubt what Stephanie or the tribe says, that they, they believe things that happened in the past. I, I don't have knowledge of that. I believe that there has been careless people in the past. I can only say on Calpine's shift that we've been very, very diligent. And I know archaeologists, archaeologists lose their jobs, but they are now pocketing a part of us. And, but... And, and, but, and we, we, we've opened, you know, we've been talking with the tribe, we've offered trips, and we want to continue that relationship, and I hate this little project to put a wedge between us, because I think we're going somewhere, we don't know what it looks like, and, and we want to work together.
Well, how can we work with them in that?
Well, I think, I think as she said, she, she was caught off guard by our letters. We were caught off guard by a condition late last week, and we go, what, what is this? You know, so it, it's, I think this is, you know, if people up front said, this is the way it's going to work, these are the rules, we, we would have, I think, not have caught off guard ourselves by a condition entering into an agreement with this project, or agreement. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and, 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 um, what Rick was saying about accidental discovery contract, we'd be interested in that. I think that would be something that, um, I think if anything was discovered, I think we would call it a true, any, any mess. They, they spoke with us, we toured Calpine, we had Geiger's, and we, we're getting, we can get, and it would be sensitive.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So you, let me understand this correctly, that you're saying that the first time you heard of this was last week when you received the printout?
End of last week, yes.
There was no discussion between you and anybody in the finding commission about our?
Right.
There was no discussion between you guys about what was going to be in this agreement?
No.
Okay.
And the agreement is between applicants and the tribe when?
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying he didn't, he's, he's saying he didn't know that it was going to be required under.
Right. We, we put it in the conditions based on, you know, we, we added to the draft conditions based on the comments from, I don't know, Calpine, or Altona Rancheria, but we did not discuss it in advance, and then, so we did, you know, kind of drop this on, on Calpine at last minute, and we didn't actually talk about the details until, we talked about a conference call, Monday afternoon.
So that explains why he didn't?
Right, so her attorney didn't have time to, it wasn't intended to be an ambush, because Katie, you know, was only just able to look at this over the last day or two.
Okay, so that, that explains, how, how did?
And I've since had conversations with counsel, because, you know, she's been looking at this whole issue of whether, you know, the legal aspect of whether we need to require this now or even under SB 52, AB, I'm sorry, AB 52.
So, I just want to say, I have no doubt AB 52, and we've been talking with the tribe, we think our relationship going forward with the tribe and how this is all done is going to evolve, and we, we look forward to that. I think, if something's necessary, I think we're all caught a little, this is a little premature, we, we were caught off guard, and we apologize for catching you folks off guard as well, it's just sort of the way it rolls.
Possibly a phone call between you and them would have alleviated some of it, but even, even at that, I mean, you only had a week's notice.
It's, it's still a condition, without the definition and?
Yeah, but they wouldn't have felt ambushed by a legal paper coming to them the night before, had you had a discussion with them, telling them, I didn't know about this, and, you know, we perhaps, they would like to talk about it further or something. I don't have any further.
Any more public input?
I, I would like to be assured that some more discussion is going to happen between Calpine and the tribe to, to clear this up. I'm a little concerned that Calpine's worried about spending money on a monitor, on a $20 000 project, and it looks like you're talking $10,000 to $20,000 for, that you might have to spend on a monitor. If you figure 100 holes and it takes an hour a hole, that's $75, times 100, that's $7,500. I mean, I'm a little concerned that you guys are so aware of that one little part when you're spending so much other money on the project. I under, you know, I understand business is business, and you guys have to do what you want, and we can't, apparently can't force it on you, so whatever agreement you guys can come to is going to be what has to happen, but I think that in all good faith, I think you should sit down with the members and, and come up with some agreement on what's going to happen, and whether it's the option that Rick talked about, whatever it is, but there'll have to be some discussion between you guys to straighten that out, so. Other than that, I don't have any other problems with the project. I think, I think it should move ahead, but I, I do have that one concern about the tribes.
I share the same concerns, as you probably already might have, that the direction the questions are coming from. You know, I think it's really important that, that the differences be worked out, there's obviously room to make an agreement here, to prioritize an area perhaps, or whatever, but, you know, I think it's important, I mean, if it goes up to me, if I had it, if I could make entry on the number of the wire. But I do like, I don't want to imply, so, encourage that the discussions start on the case.
So what are the options, Rick? We're going to remove? Do you have a, do we have to change anything as far as the motions?
You do? Well, not the motion, but the, if your motion would need to say as modified, but your, your conditions need to be modified.
Yeah.
Yeah, Section K, Condition 10, and first off, they're both going to be worded the same, but there are various, the question here, Commissioner, do you want to require or just put in, you know, modify the condition per, um, negotiated letter, that wording?
You could also, we could change it, maybe perhaps, instead of saying shall have, to say the applicant is strongly encouraged to have the cultural resources agreement in the park, or, or?
Or, or a accidental, accidental discovery agreement or protocols shall, shall coordinate or whatever in good faith with, you know, Tenor Rancheria to develop an accidental discovery plan. I think that a few options here. Also, we didn't talk about the mitigation condition in the green sheet.
Yeah, is it just one to one?
No, it's usually a minimum of three to one, up to five to one. The bigger issue we're talking about with Calpine, just the concerns of having some flexibility on when you plant, given the drought conditions, which makes sense.
We want to make sure that.
Exactly, exactly. Mortality rate of trees needs to be low.
And you could also modify Section K to have, but the problem I suspect with the language that they were concerned about is that, that the applicant shall have a cultural resource agreement. There could be some, some modifications, so the applicant shall negotiate in good faith to come to an agreement, so that if, if there was some concern about leaving the, the cultural resource agreement language in the, in, in Section K, but they gave that, that, that the applicant would negotiate in good faith to, to come to an agreement, if there was some, that could be, that could be, I'm, I'm just speaking as possibly as something that would add, I mean, sorry, that would take care of both concerns perhaps. I think, I believe the concern in the language was the, the shall have, not that, not the negotiation in good faith.
How, how about if we take a five-minute recess and you talk with him, your representative, and see if you can come to some wording agreement on what we're going to? All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Yeah.
Rick's not even 54 years old.
Seven days a week.
Yeah, welcome back from the break, everybody. Sounds like first base and urging.
Yeah, all parties admit, we, I think they come up with, with language that is a good compromise, and this would apply to both permit conditions, but if we look at that attachment four, Section K, Condition 10, in that third line, where it starts with the word applicant, instead we would say, permit holder is strongly encouraged to negotiate and execute a cultural resources agreement with Middle Town Rancheria prior to construction. Carry that same language for the other permit modification in the second, this permit.
And, as far as legal trees, just as, just as Moss left today?
Yes. And I'll give us the, the flexibility to work out the plans and schedule the details with, with Calpine.
Is there work doing the motions? Would you say as amended there? As amended, and you're going to, you're going to, are you going to read the amendments? Or we just?
I, I think they're in order now.
Discuss with everything else.
Yeah, as amended and discussed today.
Ready? I move the finding commission fine on the basis of initial study IS 15-01 prepared by the finding division and the mitigating, mitigation measures which have been added to the project, that the minor modifications as applied for by Geiger Power Company will not have significant effect on the apartment, therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be issued with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 27, 2015, and is modified today. All in favor of the post-mitigated negative declaration, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move also the finding commission fine that mitigated negative declaration prepared for the minor modifications applied for Geiger Power Company on property located at 10350 Socrates Mine Road, Middletown, California 95461, does meet the requirements of the county zoning ordinance, and that is finding commission grant the minor modifications subject to mitigated mitigation measures contained in IS 15-01 and all previous conditions of approval to remain in full force in effect with the findings listed in the staff report dated May 27, 2015, and is modified today. All in favor of approving the minor modification, say aye.
Aye.
I also move the finding commission fine that the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the complex grading permit applied for by Geiger Power Company on property located at 30350 Socrates Mine Road, Middletown, California meets the requirements of Chapter 30, Lake County Code, and the finding commission recommend that the community development director issue a complex grading permit subject to conditions of mitigation and monitoring plan prepared for IS 15-01, findings listed in the staff report dated May 27, 2015. All favor of the mitigated and monitoring plan, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Note, the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeals period for the minor modifications to previously approved use permits. There is a disagreement with the finding commission's decision and appeals to the board of supervisors taken file. The appropriate forms of applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the finding commission's final determination. Very much. Thank you.
Returning to store at 10 a.m., public area consideration of appearing to consider certification of a bioenvironmental impact report, FDIR prepared for Ballyhoo Development and holds in reason, and also consider making a recommendation to board supervisors on GPD 0602RZ 04-23 and GPD 0601. The project applicant is Hipco Development Corporation, opposing the following: one, general plan of agricultural and resource conservation, community commercial high-density residential, low-density residential, and resource conservation; two, rezone from N-A agriculture to P-C-C-DR, planned development commercial design review, mining district; PDRRD, planned development residential, residential design, combined district; and O, open space; three, general plan from development to create a mixed-use development consisting of up to 380 single-family residential lots, a 3.5 acre medium-density residential lot, a 2.5 to 3 acre senior housing assisted living facility, public open space trails, and public park facilities for house and development, and a planned development commercial area of approximately 31 acres, fronting South State Highway 29. The project consists of 150 acres, located at 18196 and 18426 South State Highway 29, Middletown, and further described in APN 014-260-46 and 51.
Mr. Chair, my apologies for making me read that long title, just to request a continuance. We, we have, the, the information took a little longer than we were anticipating to put together, and we're finding the mitigation order reporting program, and it's just kind of sorting out those details regarding what goes into the tentative map, versus later on, versus what goes into the general plan development. That work has been done, Keith was able to complete that in the last couple of days, and we'll have that packed out, and I believe probably be mailed out tomorrow morning. So again, my apologies, but just because this was continuance at a time that they certainly needed to happen, and in case there's anybody shows up that does have comments and can't comment next, maybe two weeks, probably.
Right. Thank you. So at this point, I'll open up this item for public comment. Is there any public comment for this item? See, now, three seconds. Continue speeding vote on that, or just? No. You were told that June 25th would be?
Yes, June 25th. Okay, 9:05.
9:05. So we already kind of covered some office, certainly, and we have the zoning ordinance update.
Okay, yeah, so just have this as kind of an update. So Audrey Knight here has been working on, you know, going through the county general plan and looking through the zoning ordinance, are kind of where we're at with the, with these zoning ordinance overall, and today she's put together a PowerPoint for you, and a lot of this is just kind of, you know, we haven't talked about these matters in quite some time, and it's time to start kind of getting all of this staff included up to speed as we move forward to try to implement some, some programs and policies in the general plan, so.
All right. Well, Steve, what I wanted to do is, is give an overview, kind of catch up the nexus between the general plan And so we're gonna move through that and then talk about a lot of the issues that we deal with as we're dealing with publicly in trying to implement the general plan through the zoning ordinance. We are required to have the zoning ordinance and the general plan be consistent, just as the general plan is required to be consistent throughout each of its sections. We're also required to make sure our zoning ordinance actually is consistent with the general plan. So we're gonna, just start with an overview, just so you understand the nature of the adopted public policy document, which the general plan is. It really is your guidebook. It sets the public policy for the county on all land use decisions. And a project that doesn't reflect the adopted plan would actually require an amendment. So we've seen that, right? We see the general plan amendments that come through and it's essentially saying, in order to be consistent with the general plan, you're gonna have to change the law or amend the general plan so that the project is then consistent. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. It has to be a public and adoptive document because again, it is adopted public policy. There is a legal basis for it. This goes back to, you know, our founding fathers, going back to the turn of the century. And our planning powers actually come from the police powers, looking after the health, safety, morals, general welfare of the public, looking after the long-term public interest through the police powers and public policy. But there also has to be a clear relationship between purpose and actions and due process must be conducted. So there was a fairly lengthy public process and a video you've actually experienced going through some of the area plans, most recently in Middletown, it's a fairly extensive public process. So the community engaged, came to an agreement on a vision that was shared, goals that want to be achieved, overall environmental, economic, and visual characteristics that the community desires. So you'll notice in zoning ordinances, there's always a purpose or an intent of the zone and all of the regulations that are followed need to be representative of that intent or purpose of the zone. State law requires certain elements by law. You have to have land use, the housing element, open space, safety, circulation or transportation, conservation, and noise. You'll see that these are mostly public health or safety elements. Each, go back again. Each document, each section of the plan needs to be internally consistent and because general plans are meant to be somewhat living documents, i.e. getting amended, what we find as we move through public policy is sometimes a policy in one chapter might be challenging to implement based on a policy in another section. So you might have some conflicting policies or policies that might be equally challenging. So one of the things that we do as we move through using the general plan is make sure that the document is internally consistent. That means all goals and objectives don't conflict each other. That's really hard to do. So it needs to retain a living document. Mostly they're in ten- to twenty-year timeframes. It's about as far out as most of us can think sometimes. So it does need to be at plan and plan. Our general plan has two new elements that were created in two thousand and eight. We added the water resources element, which is a fairly substantial and forward-thinking section, and an agricultural resources element, because agriculture is such a large part of the county. Do normal resources is rather unique, obviously to the county as well, we just had a demonstration at Cal Park, but that's also one unique element. Something that you're going to see during the next several months is an update to the housing element. We are in need of adopting the new housing element and so that would run from time period twenty fourteen through twenty nineteen. We're required to update that by state every five years. Some of the overall key goals that you can get from looking at the plan, establishing community growth boundaries, I think you're all familiar with that at this juncture, those were established. Encourage infill developments. Minimize rural sprawl-type development, that all new development should be designed on principles of smart growth and best management practices. That helps. Protect surface and groundwater resources from the impacts of future development with implementation of the. The new water resources element. Ah! Well, I'm about to use red, so I need to be sure. So protect service, services and groundwater resources from the impacts of future development with implementation of the new water resources element. And this obviously has come up, you know, with drought being a hot topic, and some new legislation happening on groundwater. So this is a forward-thinking element of the general plan and there's a lot of input in terms of that section. Protect and enhance agricultural resources, encourage diversification of the existing agricultural soils and lands, and of course, last and not least, protect Lake County's extraordinary natural beauty with implementation of policies that protect view sheds and limit bridge line development. So these seem to be the main kind of overall guiding principles that the land use plan is working to give to the community. So one of the primary ways we implement the general plan is the zoning ordinance. If you've actually looked at the zoning ordinance, it's this very fat document, lots of tabs, and it can be somewhat daunting for the general public, but it is our bible. We go to it every day and use it in all of our decision-making and so it's very important that we update it to make sure it reflects the policies of the general plan. And as I mentioned before, the plan gives very specific direction in that implementation matrix on what we should be doing to update zoning ordinance and a variety of other actions through other departments. And in addition, the staff who are working with the zoning ordinance has come to realize what some of the obstacles are in implementing the general plan through the code, so we also have to change it. The main identified implementation tasks that the matrix specifies have mostly to do with scenic resources and tourism, but there's, these are just headings, so it's gonna give you an idea of the subject area that we will address in the zoning ordinance. Promoting tourist-related development to simplify permitting process, creating mixed-use overlay districts that supports diversification of resort areas, protecting natural resources, there's a variety of tools that can do that, value-added or agricultural tourism, trying to create the appropriate regulation mechanism to ensure that agricultural tourism can move forward. Preservation and diversification, doing what we can to preserve and ensure diversification in the agricultural field, recreational use of Clear Lake, how we access it and clearly protecting it, keeping it clean, those are areas that the zoning ordinance and subdivision rights can help influence. Scenic resources, this was a big item that came out, maintaining and enhancing scenic corridors and view sheds, creating tools to do that. And that's, you know, it's a very complicated issue, but as we drive around or walk around or sit on our porch or dug, we really value the environment that we have and so defining those view sheds and what will affect them or without necessarily infringing on property rights is that balance that we need to seek in how do we protect the bridge line views for the community and for our visitors and tourists while still enabling property owners to deal with the plight of their land. Community design, this is, this issue came up quite a bit in several segments of the plan. Right now, we need to work on creating some flexible design standards that facilitate creative and low-impact development, having flexible parking standards for infill, commercial development, particularly to allow off-site parking and parking lot agreements. We don't wanna encourage too, you know, much in the way of, or restrict too much development going into existing facilities to meet new higher parking standards. We want to be able to be flexible and allow creative parking solutions where possible. Scenic regulations that, by guidance for developing small lake parcels, we'll take into consideration the entire scenic vista, so that two- or three-story mansion, just don't align the shoreline and block the community views. Landscaping and beautification standards for scenic and commercial areas that tie together with runoff prevention to avoid sedimentation to Clear Lake and distributaries. That has to do with best management practices, grading, landscaping, or keeping sediment out of the way and how our drainage is. Revised sign standards to implement scenic corridors in area plan goals. Create clustering provisions to preserve open space while reducing driving and infrastructure costs, protecting recharge areas, enabling easier service. Right now, we do that primarily through P Ds, but that's a very arduous process for someone to do, to do some creative designing.
Have you seen Ballyo's?
In addition to those from the general plan, there's, there's obviously that implementation matrix showed you tens of, and other implementation things, these are just, this is just the highlights. The staff has identified some changes as well and some of these mirror those in the G P, but this is a little more specific. Format changes, as I mentioned, right now the document looks rather daunting. It has, how many tabs?
Seventy-two articles.
Seventy-two articles. That's a lot of flipping through pages and so if you're reviewing one project, you'll have to perhaps go through to five or six different sections to try to figure out how to review a project. So we would like to consolidate them into subjects and topics into logical groups so that it's a lot easier to view, handle, and find all of the regulations that apply to property. Increase specificity for allowed uses and requirements to reduce interpretation and confusion. A lot of our use permits and other things like that don't have a lot of findings or what we would call conditions. We, a lot of times we need to create those conditions from scratch because they are not specified in the code. So we might have an elderly care facility, for instance, and we have to determine, well, what do we need to make sure this facility has because the findings aren't in the code right now. Sometimes we lack clear definitions, conditions and requirements for use and for zoning permits. Again, make clear findings. So for instance, the question of hoop houses, is it a greenhouse? Those kinds of things come up and when we look at our definitions to try to make determinations, you know, we end up in these scenarios, well, we consider it a greenhouse because it's temporary and, so we have to do a lot of that kind of thinking on the fly. Definitions in some, in some cases need to be expanded, in some cases. We came across one, it was like a field, a field something. We were like, what the heck is this? We couldn't, we had no idea what it was. It was some kind of a field butchery thing or a jig and it must have been something that was, you know, back in the thirties, it was some kind of a piece of machinery that we had, we had no clue what it was. I don't know if it's still relevant, but we had to, we had to really look it up and try to figure out what this was, what this definition is. Better defined charts, tables, and illustrations to create a more efficient, more efficiency for staff as well as the community. We have one table or two, I think, right now that kind of make it really easy to look and see whether or not a project needs a use permit, but with some better tables, right now in the zoning field, these tables are the go-to to figure out what's needed in our project. Again, reduce the number of articles and sections. So that's just, those are just the format things that we want to work on. And the implementation tools, we want to increase the flexibility for permitting uses in commercial districts using design for compatibility. And we ran into that a lot with the general, the general store. BK came down to those design compatibility issues as well as community safety, but some of those issues can be worked out through better design standards so it's clear at the outset how the community would want it to go through.
Did you brush that along?
Well, as part of the, the next step is the prioritization of these things, right? That's a big part of this, of how we prioritize. A few of the area plans are outdated and don't provide for infills, smart growth, pedestrian and auto design elements. Is that something that was in the implementation matrix to make sure all the area plans have the same elements? And they were really specific in the G P about what should be included in this area. So this is kind of an example of where we're heading. Doesn't that look much more inviting? Oh my gosh, that seemed, actually, look at that.
And there's a few things that were, you know, the format work is done, you know, Matrix Design Group did a lot of work and I think it's safe to say we're probably eighty percent of the way.
On the format?
Yeah, well, the format, yeah, at least eighty percent. But we're a long ways into the area, the zoning ordinance overhaul and the format is really slick. Instead of seventy-two articles, we've got seven.
So this is an actual example?
Yeah, this is a page right out of it and, and it's got these tabs, you know, to the side and of course, the whole thing will be set up to be very easy to navigate online with hyperlinks and so forth. But it's broken down into compatible sections. So in the land, you know, when you get into the zoning sections, for instance, you know, we have twenty different zoning districts, what this does is combine the similar zonings into subsections with their own tables. So ag, ag preserve, rural lands, rural residential zone have a lot of common features and uses that are allowed, so those get grouped, just like the commercials get grouped versus the industrial versus the resource-related.
So is that kind of, you have kind of like a cross reference then?
Yeah, they'll be, right.
I C S L.
Yeah, it's really slick and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Audrey, just this is what we're really excited about.
When did you, and you started this in, what, two thousand and nine?
Yeah, ten.
Two thousand and nine, ten, so the plan stopped in two thousand and eight, in two thousand and eight and then the.
So ag, ag preserve, rural lands, rural residential zoning have a lot of common features and uses that are allowed. So those get grouped, just like the commercials get grouped versus the industrial versus the resource related.
So is that kind of, you have kind of like a cross reference then?
Yeah, they'll be, right.
I guess.
Yeah, it's really slick. And I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, 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 no.
This is what we're really excited about.
When did you, and you started this in, what, 2009?
Yeah, ten.
Two thousand nine, ten. So the plan stopped in two thousand eight, in, in two thousand eight, and then the work was engaged, I believe, in two thousand nine or ten. And then I think it stopped around, I believe, twelve.
Budget cutbacks and staffing cutbacks were really, really hamper this. I mean, just kind of killed us on wrapping this up, but we're, now we're back into it with Audrey's help to get this done in the next year.
Right, and it's, it's, what's interesting is, granted, formatting it in advance, you know, provides challenges for our editing team because of all those hidden gremlins in the formatting scheme. But I've, I've actually started working from that and you can see all my little tabs and flags which have to do, you know, things that need to be addressed. So as planners come to me with questions about different projects and different issues that pop up and we realize we have to resolve something that's really confusing, it isn't clear, there's some interpretation issues involved, that's an area that we need clarification, we need to make it clear in code so that we don't have those, you know, meetings that take, you know, an hour with four planners in the room trying to figure out what something means and how we interpret it and how we interpret it with this project versus how we need to interpret it with this next project and what are the differences. So that helps.
Skip head, just wanted to show you a page of, you know, here, here's a table, the first page of the several pages of tables for the group of zonings that is, you know, separate in R1, R2, and R3. So we've done it, you know, in columns, and then you can see where the, kind of the like or compatible zonings are grouped together in these four major subsets.
So this is much more friendly, I mean, this is much more approachable. I mean, you know, for the general public, for you, for us, for everybody, it's, it's way more approachable. And it's going to be a real asset to have this complete for everybody. So we really want to get this thing cranked. And I think we have, we still have some budget left, we're consulting assistance as well. And of course, because this has to go through a due process as well, we need to have public hearings, we need to make recommendations on the final draft, and if the board supervisors begin to.
Would this be linked to the GIS system anyway? Like if I looked at my property, I could click a zoning thing?
Yeah, I think we're, it should be, yeah, because we have that.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, I think you have the, the things that are possible, I could do, if I want to do parcel map, I could click that and maybe it gives me some more information so I don't have to call you.
Right. Probably what it would do is, is, you know, on that link, it would take you back to probably this page for that grouping. So when you're in the county's RGIS and you click that, that AP, or you click that zoning or that general plan designation, I think there's like a third window in there that lets you access that. It'll go to this. And then once you get in here, it's going to have its own hyperlinks to get you around within.
Yeah, that's way better.
Yeah, it's really, really slick.
Yeah, so that, isn't that, that's so much more approachable, all the way around.
You know, there's tabs at the bottom of the page plus the references to the side.
You need, so you could almost, a high schooler could, could almost, you know, maybe you go to junior high, to high school. Okay, so.
Kind of talked about that matrix.
Yeah. So here's some, some more staff identified changes. Scenic combining district needs better tools for protection of scenic resources. We noted that as a policy right now, but we, there really isn't that much. And people could be, scenic combining district that really gives direction, explicit direction at all in this area. Parking, landscaping, sign provisions need to be more specific about visual and emotional outcomes with flexibility for creative solutions. Again, we get, get back to the Dollar General concepts in terms of, you know, monocle on the street versus just needing one on store. Then, you know, a project based on zoning might be allowed one by right, but is it appropriate for this location? We don't want to, we want to be really clear so that our sign provisions are really helping it in policies and goals. Streamline the plan development process. Right now, it's fairly arduous, has lots of processes involved, a lot of, some other jurisdictions, PDs are just as easy as any other zone, doesn't require quite the layers that we have place.
And part of that also is we're hoping we can simplify that so that you just have a plan development process and whether that's commercial, ag, or residential, the process is the same and it all fits under that umbrella, it's more of an overlay. Because, I mean, we, we've talked in the past about having a plan development ag for some of these areas where you may get, somebody's got a few hundred acres of vineyard with winery, they want to have additional lodging, you know, and dining for those guests and, you know, something like you'd see in, in that, we can't accommodate that right now.
So this might be, or this permit and that permit instead of one creative, this is what we want to create, here's the PD, and let's make it easier. Revision of maximum lot coverage departments to urge infill, compact smart growth, increase flexibility for produce stands, farmers markets, small community, commerce driven events. We've had a lot of inquiries about just small community events, somebody wanting to establish one day a week educational, environmental educational booths in front of the store. You know, how, how do we address that? Well, do we have anything in language? No, either it's a big event or it's a farmer's market, there's nothing in between. One day, I think, we ran, had like three people inquiring about small events because summer's coming up and we didn't want to encourage that. We wanted to encourage the small community events and people, you know, being creative and creating tourist and community opportunities. So right now, we don't really have a smaller scale opportunity to update wind, solar, and other alternative energy guidelines. This is just something that came about by state law as well, is all the updates in the field. Continuing, non-conforming regulations are too restricted for legal non-conforming commercial uses, but they're not restricted enough for residential uses. We have a lot of non-conforming lots and properties and parcels and, and right now, it's a little, well, vague as far as the residential, but it's very restricted for commercial. So we want to encourage commerce, we want to have more flexibility for those non-conforming commercial uses to continue and to be creative in those areas.
And probably just even having a clear definition of abandonment. If a property is maintained but just not used, it's abandoned, just as an example. So, you know, at what point is, is that commercial property abandoned?
Yeah, because the way the code reads, if you, if it hasn't been a non-conforming use, let's say, hasn't been occupied for, is it a year, two years, or six months?
For residential, it's two, for commercial, it's one.
It's only one, yeah. So in some jurisdictions, it's six months. If something hasn't been continuously occupied for six months, then it's, you know, the non-conformity, you know, gets put by the side and now anyone who comes in has to conform with the new use regulations on the property. So in this case, it's for two years.
Yeah, one.
One for compliant. Revision of design review guidelines to be more consistent, clear, and user friendly. Many times, we'll come to you and you need to act as a design review board, and then how do you make that decision? What are the criteria which to review a design? See, some of that is subjective in a lot of cases, it's, you know, we don't want to be too subjective, we want to make sure that the first phase is community and point of standard. All property along the shoreline of Clear Lake needs to have design review and scenic and natural resource protections regardless of base zone or land use designations. This isn't consistent right now. Too many combining overlay districts applied to one property makes it confusing for everyone. I don't know, when you look at some of these applications that come in, but there's sometimes a string of letters after a zoning designation, and you're like, well, what? And that goes all this. And can you imagine trying to figure out how to apply all these different regulations from one of these properties? So it can become very confusing both for the public when they look at their zone and they say, well, you can do this, but you can't do that feature in this. Well, wait, you're also in this and well, you can't do that feature in that, so you need to do this, and now we've got to come up with a formula of what you can do. So that's something to look at. There's a, there's some overlap and confusion between granny units, second units, guesthouses, or later quarters. It's kind of confusing, like the differences and qualifying which, which is which, is detached and detached and kitchen, non kitchen.
Kind of ag failing.
Oh, and ag failing, yeah, so you get in, what's there to mean for a labor and ag? You know, do we need all these distinctions? Are they still relevant? Can't we just have second residential unit regardless of, you need to keep, you know, another distinction?
I have a question. So it sounds to me like you're clarifying as well as modifying.
Yes.
Okay, so in modification, let's see, so you approach something because it wasn't clear, then even though that might have been written in nineteen twenty-five, then you could say according, then you could modify it or add or subtract according to the standards taken, is that right?
Through, through that vetting process, I think, yes, we move forward this, well, it's going to be a challenge. Part of our challenge all along with this update.
Maybe a big challenge.
It is to, we have huge format problems. So the first thing we try to do is shake, without changing any of the context.
Content.
Context, excuse me, move it all into the new format. So that then, and we've got that moved into the format, now we've got to start focusing on the outdated stuff, how do we better interpret it? If this is outdated, this is important versus, yeah, that thing Rick, you know. So it's going to be real careful that there's full disclosure moving forward when we get into workshops and hearings on, on adoption of the revisions that were clear on what's proposed to be changed and why.
Okay, I just want to confirm that, I think. Yeah, well, and this is, you know, that's why in these bullet lists, I mean, some of this stuff, you know, we've known these have been issues for, you know.
Ten years.
And, you know, relying on Rick's historic knowledge to keep the, this is how we interpret this, so that every, you know, everyone's little zoning or personal zoning ordinance has their own little notes, right, about, okay, this is how we interpret that and sort of this, and here's the flag for that, you know, our, our tricks and coping mechanisms to keep consistency going.
You know, annual density example, in like your mid nineties emus, all of a sudden everybody was getting emus thinking that's the next, that's the next white meat or whatever, red meat or whatever. And that lasted for about two years, everybody was calling us saying, hey, how many emus can I have? We're looking at our, our eggs, and well, you got acres of SR and gee, what, well, it's not a rabbit, it's not a chicken, it's not a goat, it's not a horse, what the heck is it? What's our density? How do we interpret this?
Then chickens, then chickens come to big race, and the, for eggs and roosters and oh, how many chickens?
It turns out emus weren't really the, the economic boom that they were thought to be, and everybody was cut for emus in some of the countryside. So, yeah, I try to come up with something that's going to be more adaptable to, to future changes and minimize the amount of interpretation that it takes. Because that, that interpretation is a huge daily problem. I mean, we're, I think Audrey kind of, you know, she touched on that, but it is, it is eating up a tremendous amount of staff time because it's not just, you know, it's that planner at the counter that gets that question. And then he or she runs back to Audrey or I or, or this, like, oh my goodness, now it's, now it's three or four of us trying to figure out and get an answer on this. And we've just spent collectively an hour, hour and a half worth of people hours on that one, how, you know.
How many emus?
That's something quite old to know.
I wish, I wish I waited how I read this down.
Well, again, many, you start going, okay, well now, is there an age limit? Does it have to be your grandmother? Is it, can it be?
You can't enforce the age of, you can't actually enforce the age.
Is it the same thing? Is it an opere unit? Is it, is it, can I just print it out? I mean, do I have to, does it have to be a family member? And then we're like, oh, do you want to go there? All right, so I think we have a couple more, and then we'll do this. The SR zones, zone issues with well-inceptive on one acre lots does not meet the purpose or intent of the zone. The whole concept of the SR was that it acts as a transition as a geography urbanizes, that it allow the opportunity for further subdivision into more urban lots, or three thousand to eight thousand square foot lots. But when you have one acre of land and it's unwell-inceptive, it really doesn't lend itself to subdivision, further subdivision, it's probably going to stay in that pattern. Biological health has challenges with well-inceptive at one acre or slightly less than one acre as well, but they're relying on us for that standard. So we've, we've got a lot of that currently that we're wrestling with, and how do we deal with that?
Yeah, and it's, this was a real conundrum, especially in that you, you know, you look in terms of the SR being kind of on the edge of town, that the next area that the community's going to expand into is the logical progression where the sewer and water will be extended. And this SR zoning, we allow a significant amount of ag uses, as used by right as well. You know, how do you deal with that when maybe somebody's got a bunch of goats or chickens on their one acre parcel and then the five acre SR zone parcel next door gets subdivided into, you know, twenty parcels as it rezones, you know, as that community grows in that area? How do you, you know, there's a lot of potential for conflict the way that zoning is currently set up. If, if really its intent is more of a reserve area, keep it low density, it's the next logical step for the community to grow within its boundaries.
And the intent was, you know, looking down the road, but it really, we have to have it at a size that will really truly enable further subdivision when central water and sewer can be addressed at that level. So what, it's hard, it's, especially when you, you side a house in the middle of your acre and then you've got your leach field and you've got, well, how are you really going to subdivide this?
Yeah, and the type of subdivision that if you see it tends to be kind of that flag lot, you know, okay, my one acre, now I'm going to go to one half acre parcels and I'm just going to have that little panhandle, ten foot wide, fifteen foot wide, strip that's a couple hundred feet long to get to the back.
But then with the dirt road, don't go into the back lawn. There's no size standards for irrigation ponds, evaporation during drought because a larger policy issue. We really don't have much in the way of standards and regulations around ponds and reservoirs in general. We have two fairly substantial applications in right now, one for a five acre foot pond and another for a roughly ten acre pond.
And this is kind of mired in the, you know, part of this kind of right to farm ordinance that plays into this too, but, you know, in the middle of a drought, and we know that Clear Lake, as an example, evaporates about three feet of water a year, so we're assuming that private ponds are doing the same. Somebody putting in a frost protection pond for their vineyard, you know, makes sense, you need it during the winter, and perhaps we need to have standards in the zoning ordinance that says, okay, for frost protection ponds, don't keep them full also. You know, drain it off towards the spring, use that water by, so that by the hot months it's dry, so you're not just sitting there refilling it to have it evaporate out, you're pulling that out of the ground, you know, where water takes.
Cities right now, right now across the state, for instance, pool applications and pool permits, you're allowed to actually pull a permit for a pool, but you're not allowed to fill it just because of that big evaporation issue and.
Because of severe drought.
And because of a severe drought. So some, you know, people track their water in, but it can have to be that conflict. Vineyards, tasting rooms, and wineries need refinement for consistency, flexibility, and clarity. We've had a lot of activity in this area, a lot of, you know, interest in tasting rooms and a lot of vineyards moving through, and so we definitely need some refinement and clarity in some of the code, the way it's written now, so that it's easier for the public. It'd be nice to have a one or two pager that, you know, about vineyard development, wineries and tasting rooms in the county so that it's really easy for anyone wanting to do this so they know how, where, what. Oak trees and native species should have standard protections in place, possibly the tree preservation ordinance. What we've been doing to date is through our mitigations and initial studies, trying to get to some of this for particularly folks who go in and gather all their oak trees in preparation for developing a green, to have some replacement schedule of some, right now we do that through mitigations in some cases, but we really don't have anything county wide that addresses native species and particularly oak trees litigation. R L and R R zones need better, need to better address relationships between ag residential and ag tourism. We've had some issues pop up, you know, bed and breakfasts and others that want to come forward and A P C zones, that are surrounded on all sides by ag. And, you know, we've run into, you know, the wanting to have, expand into events, do other things. And right now that that's not really allowed. So you could have, let's say, two, two bed and breakfasts, but having events, having larger daddlings, having a larger hotel, we're surrounded on all sides by ag, doesn't work right now in the code. But if we're going to have ag tourism, we really need to figure out how we can balance this out. You know, under what conditions can you have those kinds of things so that we do meet the intent to keep agriculture first and we provide for ag tourism. And because the R L, the R R zones are used a lot for vineyard development as well as other ag uses, it's still a residential zone. So we have to have a really good balance in these. And we, right now, we're at the front line of trying to figure out how to do that in our approval process for permits. Without a lot of clear policy guidance on what's good, what's not, and how can we expand some of these uses so that people can do some ag tourism in this. Couple more, clustering provisions for rural lands without having to apply to the P D. The A P C zoning, rezoning increases the process of the Williamson Act. You know, we need to do some revisitation. There's a lot of inactive or property that probably should be taken out of the A P C or out of the Williamson Act. The fact that Williamson Act is a separate zone requires further processing and requires further setup. So this is just the highlights. So it's a lot to take in. We're just starting getting into this process. So your input, your areas of concern as you review projects, stumbling blocks that you've run into in decision making that we can help with in the code, we'll be looking for that. And we're just, we're still trying to determine our schedule and our priorities, which is really the next step. So questions, concerns?
I need a updated list of zoning aggregation.
Chi Chi?
Chi Chi?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a company that's zoning ordinance, correct?
Oh, no, I don't.
No, you don't?
But by the size of it, I don't, do I?
If you have trouble sleeping, it's a real.
It's online.
It is online, it is online.
You should have a hard copy.
Yeah, okay, good.
And what we might, you know, I'm not sure how we're going to work through this, whether we'll work through the existing code or we'll work through the re-formatted code. I think this is a lot easier just from my coming into the county. When I looked at the existing code, I went, ah, let me see the new one. See if I can just, I'll just start with the new one. So I'm not sure what's going to be best. If you're familiar with the existing code as a.
Well, at this point, the existing is the best tool, even though it's a horrendous format right now, but hey, I'll make sure.
Okay, did you get that before the District 30 that, remember, we mentioned at the end of the last meeting? The general plan like for just the district?
Oh, the, I'm sorry, the shoreline community, the area plan. Yeah, yeah, that's right, it's in my office.
Okay.
So is there anything that, any area that you would like us to work on first or any of the issues that you think are most important?
I can't think of anything right off the top of my head, but it varies from meeting to meetings what the priority is. I guess the design thing is pretty important right now especially. According to the A P C requirements given us a part of collateral.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have, we don't really have any, we don't have any standing design review committees anymore and that's a challenge too. It's just like, you know, it's probably been relying more and more on you folks, but it's kind of like this design committee. It's a challenge. When we had to redevelop an agency, that agency was able to pay, you know, hire an architect to come up with some design guidelines for the North Shore communities, but we don't have the funding to get that together for the other, you know, remaining communities. So all we have is the, you know, what's been vetted by these advisory committees, but you know, they're not rendering for just, you know, policy direction.
And sometimes it's vague and you say community character, well, what are the, how do you define that community character?
In which building are you talking about?
Right. So we have to have a collective understanding and agreement on what is back community character that we are moving towards. Some that we can do through updating the C two, C one standards, the commercial standards. Some of it is through design, the design review findings. We can address things like scale, massing.
Building size. Yeah, it's not just architects we're seeing in those dollar general projects. It's how a building sits on the property depending on the community it's proposed.
Just the site planning.
It's like, you can utilize like math or some of that stuff, sort of preliminary and then also like, you know, the council business associations is pretty active.
Yeah, they were on our, they were on our list. They were invited to the pre-application meeting. They reviewed the project through the request for review process. It's tough for, I think we all have a really difficult time pinning down what it is or the textual, what we want to see. It's easier when you see an example, you go, oh, I have, I don't think that, but you try to come up with it is a challenge.
So scheduling wise, I mean, we do have a lot of the formatting done, but we are going to start bringing this stuff forward. So, you know, we're going to continue, this is going to kick off, if you will, to moving forward with some modifications to the code. And we're trying to work on some of those priorities, but like just hearing from you now, you know, we can start on the design review and the design standards.
And part of this, the methodology has been, you know, as Audrey's gotten acclimated and it's ruined, you know, spearheading the website relaunch, if you will, because we're trying to find ways to drive down the time and we're spending on the phone and at the counter. It is, you know, you figure we're still getting on average roughly 100 calls a day and about 18.
330 people we serve.
About 18, about 18 walk-ins a day at the counter plus about 100 coming calls. And now phone calls, some of that is just quick call in the morning, hey, it's a tough day, I see your building is suffering, I'm going to have my slide. That's a 30 second call, but the bulk of them turn into several minutes to 10 minutes to 15 minutes.
To a couple of days, someone calling from Southern California going, hey, I have this property, what can I do with the?
Even a 30 second phone call takes you away from what you're doing. And it takes time again to get back into that zone. So even though it takes 30 seconds, it takes a lot more time.
And we're only nine hours a day. You know, we have the planning staff available six hours a day, but the office, the counter is open nine hours a day. And it's, you know, it's trying to maintain that service level and not having the ability to perhaps say, sorry, our lines are busy right now, our staff is busy right now. Would you mind taking a look on the county website? You may be able to get here, you might be able to get some of your answers there. If you can't find them there, maybe call us back in a couple hours and we'll be less busy. We're trying to drive that down because the reality, we have to, we have to free up our staff to work on the longer range projects and just the normal use permit processing and whatnot. And it's really difficult to do that when the complexity of the questions that we get requires several people involved to figure that out. It has to go up chain, I mean, it has to, at some point, it's one of us that has to own that decision, now we're interpreting that code. And it takes some work to do that sometimes. And so now all of a sudden, there's two or three of us tied up trying to resolve that issue when we could have been wrapping up that initial study and sorting out details or coordinating better with applicants. So that'll get something at the last minute. You know, we're constantly in a state of triage.
So the more we can make it user friendly as well, I mean, we have calls, you know, the code essentially says, well, you can have this size of a lot if you're on this slope or this fire danger area or this. So now you've got this complex calculation and for some reason, an architect from San Diego calling can't figure it out online myself. So we end up with a couple of planners researching parcels, doing all the calculations, figuring out the areas, finding out the slopes, trying to figure out their yield.
Doing his job.
Doing his job for him and we're not getting hit, but you know, maybe he'll come in at some point, who knows?
Yeah.
So if we made it simpler, hey, maybe they could actually do it and we wouldn't be spending three hours helping somebody from San Diego speculating on investment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Sure, any meeting?
All right.